At this time, we just please stand for our prayer and pledge allegiance to the Lord.
Oh my God, oh heavenly Father, we come before you giving you thanks. Thanks for your many blessings that you have restored upon us. Thank you for this day that you allow us to see. We like to pray for our citizens, local, and state official that we do what's pleasing in the eyesight of your heavenly name. In your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I plead the duty to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's our regular section here at the Board of County Commissioners here at Madison County held today, June 1st, 2011, at 9:01. At this time, I'd like to do the roll call. District 1, Justin Hammack, Commissioner Hammack. District 2, Commissioner Vickers. District 3, Commissioner Paris. District 4, Commissioner Martin. District 5, Commissioner Ellis. All Commissioners are present. Moving down to adoption of agenda, do we have any additional mission from the agenda?
No ma'am.
At this time, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda.
Sumo.
I have a motion from Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Vickers. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five aye. Moving down to petition from the public. Please limit your time to a five-minute limit. Mr. Sanders, suit caps.
My name is Miranda Sanders, and this is a request for variance of the law. To my understanding, if a person is charged with a crime against a child under the age of sixteen years of age cannot live 2,500 feet from a bus stop or school, this request is not to change the law but to ask for variance for Mr. James Shepherd Glass to be able to return to his home with Mrs. Estella R. Glass located at 261 Home Loop Way, Greenville, Florida, which at their property line, in fact, is less than 1,000 feet from a bus stop. This property has been owned by Mr. James Shepherd Glass since 1993, and they have been paid in tax payers. They are presently living at a boarding house in Zephyr Hills, Florida. Mr. James Shepherd Glass was convicted August of 1996 for attempted sexual behavior on a minor child. That child was six-years-old at the time. Mr. James Shepherd Glass served thirteen years in UCI Jackson Butler Prison and State Prisons in the state of Florida, has been to sex therapy classes in Dade County probation in Zephyr Hills, Florida, as well as therapy and prison before he was released. Mr. James Shepherd Glass is now sixty-five years old and disabled, and Mrs. Glass, his wife, for over thirty years is seventy-one and also disabled. We are requesting permission from the community commission members of Madison, Florida, to ask that he be able to return to his home that he owns in Greenville, Florida. My whole family, we live in a family plot out there. Each of my brothers and sisters own a half acre to an acre of property out there, and we live in a rural area, and we're all requesting that they be able to leave back in their home because as of now, he cannot without not being a violation of his probation. And they're living in a boarding house in Zephyr Hills, Florida as of now, and him and my mother have been married for over thirty years.
Mr. Cack, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Tom Turner for comments.
What the board did was enacted several years ago, enacted an ordinance that prohibited child predators, convicted sexual predators, from residing within seventy feet of a bus stop and a school and all of that. You don't have the authority to give any kind of variance or anything like that. If the board wished to consider something along those lines, you would need to instruct me to prepare amendment to the ordinance that would allow you the ability to give variance something along those lines, given this board decided to do that. I would think before you made any decision on that, you would certainly want to hear from the sheriff and law enforcement, possibly even child services on what's the best way to approach that. But as of right now, there's no, you have no option to give it a variance. The only thing you can do would be to amend that ordinance that we passed years ago.
Do the state also have orders or some sentence to that effect?
And I have not kept up with the law. At the time we did it, the state had a certain number of feet, like I would say a thousand feet, and then local communities could go further, and we did twenty-five hundred feet. Now, there was a push in the legislature several years ago to simply wipe out all the local ordinances and make it uniform statewide and say this is what it's going to be statewide, but I have not kept up with that. That'd be a good question for the sheriff. I can, I probably, I said the way I would look into it is call the sheriff and ask him that. I mean, that might be just to ask him and tell us what he thinks of it.
Sheriff's not here today? Well, I have signed papers from all of the property owners out there, as you say.
If you wish to present, but you can't report.
I'm the chairman of commissioners, councilor. I'm going to lead you out and the rest of you. For the recorded record, Tommy Green, the native of Madison County, here a year or so back, I came before the commission and understanding, and we all know that from Madison to State Road, to the Interstate 10 is under the state jurisdiction. But just as courtesy to the county commissioners and county, I'm coming for y'all today. I had brought, I was willing to, an offer to buy a verle similar from Monticello to Tallahassee to put along the road right away from Madison to the interstate, and it was my fault that I didn't go and explain it to the concerned people that came up because the way it was supposed to have worked, it wouldn't have affected anybody unless it was just somebody along the road that just didn't want to run their house. So now we've come back and I talked to Commissioner Martin, he contacted the state, and I'm willing to pay for wildflower seed and the state, according to this letter here of Mr. Cherry, will do the planning and I guess the maintenance. It doesn't say anything about maintenance in here. If we can get some, try to beautify State Road 53 from Madison to the interstate because that's the main thoroughfare between Madison and the interstate. And so I'm just bringing it before the commissioners in case if anything else like the escrow, a room for our homes. I don't want to go far with it unless we've got their room with county and the citizens of county.
Mr. Green, I don't have as far as, I think that's a good idea as far as planting wildflower. I would like to do, like place it on the agenda for reviews so the other commissioners can have time to look over it.
That's fine.
And I would like to re-agenda it maybe for the next meeting to allow enough time, but first turn it over to the board and see if they have any comments or questions that they have for you. Commissioner Martin?
Yes, Mr. Green did contact me, and I had the manager contact DOT. They said that they never called in, and I don't. We need to re-agenda it for the next meeting. We can do that.
I think I'm probably even had before, because those trees would grow so tall, be in conflict with, or with a paralys, wildflower, she shouldn't probably know.
So I will re-agenda it for the next meeting and then we'll add it to the agenda and go on it then. Would that be okay?
That's fine.
Okay, but so far, my consent, Mr. Ellis?
I have a problem. It's really good to say good. We've got some, we've got some.
So do you want to have?
We've got these, these wildflowers, and as this states in here, they need to be planted first part of the fall. So there's a lady out here, I think, on cattail that's got seed, and I, there's a place, I've got a catalog out of Texas, so we've got some sources for her.
Mr. Anderson? So it's pretty much it.
We've got to go.
All right.
Appreciate it, Mr. Green.
Russell Williams?
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning. What this is in reference to, I have been trying to do this now for a couple of months, a couple of, actually several months, actually. We would like to offer all the county offices, all the county employees that tend to have an official portrait. I'm going to pass this photograph around. This is the back rock that would actually be enclosed on the portrait. There will be no charge to the county of it one. There will also be, the photograph will be taken on a green screen, which will, that back rock will be dropped in. Will also be allowed to use other backdrops, such as a blue backdrop or whatever color, for emergency management because I know they're in the process of making up ID cards in the county. I have spoken to Mr. Sanders about it, and we both, you know, kind of think that's a very good idea, but as far as the charge will be, no charge. I've talked to several of the fire chiefs and all about it, and they're all for it. I want to just come with the county commissioner this morning to ask if I had any questions or if this is possible. That's pretty much it.
You can offer photos for all county employees?
Yes. Now, we're going to provide a eleven-by-fourteen for each of the county officers, any elected official in the county. They'll get eleven-by-fourteen with that backrock wherever it's at. We will not provide for every employee. Employee pictures will be stop-based through personal management. They'll have the dislaw level, and if we need to have an official portrait of that person, it'll be available. We'll plan to run down, take it or anything like that.
Commissioners?
I think it's happening on a block here, they just don't.
Yeah, it's only on block here, correct. I will say.
I think they're going to volunteer, take it right. That's no problem.
Yeah.
That's no problem.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Pamela Branch? It's very difficult. Would you come up front, please, ma'am? One second, Ms. Branch.
I have to explain, Mary Ann Green, last time I said anything about not being able to hear, my family sent me out and had my hearing tested, and everything is okay with my hearing, but our sound system is such in here that it is very difficult to track exactly what people are saying as well as your reactions. And what you say is very important to me. I'm not sure what we can do about that. Maybe everybody can talk louder until we can do a better system.
Is it us up here or this one here?
It's all up here.
Oh, okay.
No. Being close to your, I can hear Commissioner Martin very well, and I recommend that body angle for everybody because I don't want to miss the words, you know that.
Thank you. Can we speak closer to the mic, Ms. Green?
Thank you.
Ms. Branch?
Good morning. Good morning. I have a list of names in our neighborhood for petitions for paving road, farm road, because it's down there, it's real dusty, and then we have neighborhoods that are oxygen, you know, paint hard to breathe, and it just, it just real dusty, you know, it's just terrible. It's just a mess, and it been like this for a while now.
Yes, ma'am, I've talked to them back there early, and I've talked to road park a little bit. Our only alternative right now with paving would be some millings, and I'm not sure that, Red, can you help me out? You were going, you know exactly the length of it? I believe that's a half mile, and they're about a half mile, and they're just millings now, between eighteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars. But now I done some, we get into a little layer about going Cassaberry Road, and it'll almost be that if you do both, and that'll be coming up before later on, before y'all not be discussing that. Y'all, if you want to wait till then, we can discuss it. I mean, farm road, what you got there compatible is almost like Cassaberry Road, except it's a little shorter.
I don't know where Cassaberry is.
That's off of 360, it's Lime Rock Road. I got some figures on it today.
Oh, so you recommend doing this Cassaberry Road?
Well, we got that, I have worked up some figures for Cassaberry, and those figures be almost about like, well, farm road should be a little less because farm road is two tenths a mile shorter than what Cassaberry is. And I got it on the agenda this afternoon, but this morning to be discussed. We can, but for just for the millings, it'd be somewhere around between eighteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars just for the millings. But if you do the whole road, pave the whole road, millings and everything, it'd be somewhere around ninety thousand dollars, probably between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars in the whole thing, paving and all.
I don't think we have that in.
Okay, well.
You talking about millings being eighteen to twenty thousand dollars?
Yes.
That would probably get us by, I've had all the parts on this piece drove out there. And there's probably a real, you know, close, a lot of traffic.
Yes, that's easier, that's a busy road.
We've got on a list, but they do something with it. Can millings not be used with fifth and sixth cent? Or this, I've got a lot of make that out of.
That's the capital proof.
Yes. I think millings is something that basically doesn't come out of the main question. He's part of a crazy project.
He said he can't hear you, Mr. Sanders.
All right, it's great.
Can I, Tom, can you help us with this?
I would have to look at the fifth and sixth. I don't know that there's a reason you can't use that fifth and sixth. I'd have to look at it. I think you need to, because you have the fifth and sixth, and I don't think it's just construction. I think you can use it for construction, those types of things. Yeah, we have, that is how we typically use it, but we need to look at it, so.
If it's possible. How you go ahead and look at the milling now and get a front finger on it?
Yes, sir. I can bring you back, I'll go measure it, get the distance. I can bring you back a book of fleet of volume if you want to, what it would take.
Okay. We're going to pursue that and try to at least probably do some millings on the farm road for right.
Come out on farm road.
Yes, thank you. Just maybe a little Franklin. Good morning, Ms. Green.
Good morning. Yeah, but I own the rest farm. And we really need that road paved, because we got a, I didn't make though, she is on oxygen. It should be a rat, and the road go this way in a high space in the road. And we really need to pay, uh, pay, and I'm gonna say this, I want to work here, they paying west farm road down in Lee. And I called up the county commissioner, and I mentioned to him, and he told me that they gonna pay Lee way because it no traffic, but it wasn't coming all the way up. See what I'm saying? But it really need paved it because it's late, and you met there, that you on oxygen thing. So you all need to consider that because I cannot hear this year, I be talking when he is, and you haven't did anything about it. So this is what I'm here.
Ms. Green, Commissioner Ellis is going to look into that, you know, consideration for that. That's what he just spoke with the road department about.
Okay. Now, thank you very much of your baby.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Sammy Turner, is that also about farm road also?
That's actually the same thing.
Okay, did you give clarity and understanding that Commissioner Ellis is going to look into that about, you know, things that he can do as far as paving or adjusting the road?
Whatever, you know, but I'm on oxygen myself. I have to, and I can't all breathe sometimes out there, you know, just like a cloud of dust. Steady now. It's bad on people, it's sick.
Yes, sir. Mr. Larry Solomon?
That's about the same thing.
Did you, could you hear us from the back that Commissioner Ellis is going to look into it as far as, you know, making a priority to get back, review that, the adjustment or something they can do on that road?
Yes.
Nikki Saunders, Page PV, could you guys come up?
Good morning. On behalf of the Madison Cowmen's Association, we would like to get permission to use the hot stop building by the extension office for a prospect steer show, October 15. This year, we're proposing a one-day show, but our goal is to have a two-day show, which will bring in families and they'll spend, you know, their money and their time here. So we're hoping to build it up.
I don't have a problem with that. Questioning board, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, I think right now, our lease is up on the.
That's correct.
Somewhere we got back to that decision, what we're going to do with it, if we're going to re-lease it or the dealership. Actually, right now, I think in order to reuse that, we don't want to get permission from, get, from back to, from my.
And haven't you been in contact with the, with the rip owners?
They're willing to, you know, go back with another lease if we want to.
And how much have we been leasing up for?
You talking about money-wise? There's no cost to us, we sign a lease that we're responsible for all repairs and all maintenance when we sign that lease. And I'm sure they'll do it for a year, if we do it five years and maybe even thirty years. So I'm talking about a lot of years, we need to be careful about the maintenance side of it, that's right.
Well, could you also state that it could possibly be a year?
I think, I think so.
The lease amount will be a year?
I could talk to Department of Agriculture and see. Would you do it for years?
What's the date, Mickey? Y'all want?
October 15.
October 15, okay. Maybe, Alan, if you could talk to them and see if they'll, I know we, you know, put a committee together to try to look at some other things, but to get it passing and do what they want to do, if we have to lease it a year, we can do that and then go back after a year and re-lease it.
I think probably to the fact, I'll go fifteen, and y'all probably need to do some planning fast, that's a great idea, you know, so.
So do we need to come back to, to?
I would think that Alan could just contact them and if it ain't, or whatever the outcome is, I mean, just let Mickey know you want to come back. I don't see no reason why we couldn't do it.
Well, we actually, there will be an actual written lease that has to be executed and all that, so.
Okay.
Because we've had to do that in the past.
Right.
So we need to have them send us, because I think they prepared the last one, sent to us, and said, hey, this is what we require you to sign and all that.
Has anyone talked to them about possibly them donating the building to the county?
Yes, they were not willing to do that. They wanted us to pay, I think, about two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand dollars for it.
Now, was that under new administration or under?
When it was under the old administration, but the same guy that I've been talking to right underneath, Adam Burton, is saying the same thing. They're not willing to do it.
So, Mr. Cherry, we get back with you, and hopefully everything can be processed before October, the guys can get everything going before then. Yeah, we need to get it on the other side.
Do y'all want, Mr. Cherry, to ask them to send us another proposed lease and so forth, et cetera?
That would be sufficient.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't worry. Ms. Sissy Branch, that was also about farm road?
Yes, it's about the same thing. And I wish they would do something because I'm right at the road, I'm right side of the road. I can't even overwhelm them.
Yes, ma'am.
Because come up and down that road wide, you think a house on fire, and those go in.
Yes, ma'am.
So I wish they would consider and do something about it because it really needs something here.
Well, we'll have something back by next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Moving down to approvals and minutes from the regular health meeting, May 18th, May 23rd. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? We had both of the meetings for May 18th and May 23rd. Motion from Commissioner Vickers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Martin, any other discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, five aye. Moving to department heads, do we have any representative here from the sheriff department? I'll pop to appraisal, Ms. Barville.
Good morning.
Can you hear me, Ms. Green?
I usually speak.
I usually speak loud enough that I don't be good at that, so. Today is our day that we certify to all the taxing authorities, so you will all be getting numbers from us, probably by fax. And right now, we're down one percent, which is much better than we had projected earlier. We still have to finish our centrally assessed, state still rolls those out to us until the last day of certification, and also our tangible personal property, which Jim Pence is working on. They probably will not be here until the last minute as well, we'll be keying those last few days. But that number is six hundred and nine million, eight hundred and twenty-three, oh twenty, we're down one percent. Also, we had yesterday, Mr. Dave Santos with the state that has finished our sales qualification study, and we did really well. We had probably two hundred and eighty sales only last year in Madison, very few sales. And what our office is responsible for doing is determining whether those are qualified or unqualified sales. And we were only wrong on one of them, so, and that was that where the A R C building purchased the hair furniture. We qualified that, and they wouldn't accept that as a qualified sale. It was a good amount of money, so we felt like it was, they do test us on these, therefore, out of those subjects that they did choose, there was only one that was incorrect, and we were proud that we had done that well. What we have to do is when those sales do occur, we have to send letters out now. The state requires us to send out a verification letter to find out that they're pinned to anyone, and, you know, was there any personal property included with that? And our response has been pretty good, but sometimes people just like to fill them in the garbage and not return them to us. Other than that, that's all we have from the property appraisers office, do you have any questions, morning? Okay, thank you.
Tax collector, Ms. Glenn, anyone from her department? Supervisor election, Ms. Williams?
Nothing at this time.
Consider agenda items one to six, do I have a motion to approve?
My motion.
I have a motion by?
Just, just a moment, there needs to be a correction on the number five, instead of EMS, that should be even add one more. Just for the, just for your information.
With the corrections, item number five, motion was made by Commissioner Hamlet, seconded by Commissioner Vickers, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o. Moving to public works, item number one, discussing regarding paving of collection site, Mr. Watts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In your packets, or you'll find some information referencing the paving of two additional collection sites. And those two additional sites were Industrial Park and Rocky Foot Road. There's also a third one, which spoke to Ravenswood, and Ravenswood had been approved earlier based upon a piggy back amount that was given by APEC because of work being done on Highway ninety. That was already in the budget for approval. What I'd like to do is to look at the two findings for Industrial Park and Rocky Foot Road. Combined, the totals are fifty thousand, ninety-one oh three, as given per quote from APEC. Now, Mr. Chair and I sit down with Mrs. Sanders to review our budgets as far as reserves go. There are adequate monies, and it's not a waste of budget to pay those two collection sites, however, doing so would cause a depletion of what some of those reserves would look like. So a depletion, Commissioner, is we'd like to probably resort to an alternative source, and that is to take a look at five and six monies that may be left over toward the end of the fiscal year. And if there are any, we might choose to see if some of that might be used for a prioritized listing of what those sites would look like. Rather than taking that amount out of our reserves right now, that could hurt us, I think, as we approach the beginning of the fiscal year. And if five to six monies are available, we could use some of that and supplement what the other costs might be, what our reserves look like at that point, I think might be, might be a good choice. During the meantime, what I'd like to do is to get a quote from other providers, so we might be able to compare what APEC provided versus what other providers could provide the same services. And chances are, the prices may differ somewhat, but then that will be down the road toward the September, October timeframe, compared to the current price right now that APEC is offering us. And if we look at those, about one twenty-five or thousand, other ones twenty-seven thousand, somewhere about that, would be, and I would ask you to consider to let us do it. And during the meantime, immediate solutions would resort to continuous paving and doing some repair work on the surfaces as they were needed in order to keep them available for sales and transportation, which I think would be adding to safety, and of course, site enhancement can always come probably a little later. But to expand that amount of money right now, I would ask you to consider letting us do it probably at a later date. And if there are five to six monies available, we'd be able to access some of that.
I think that I agree with you, you don't have to wonder right now, maybe we need to make this on long raise program, and start budgeting so many, so much control for your, your, your pay, your selection sites over a couple of years.
I would, I would also consider your recommendation also, Mr. Watts, due to the fact that, the expenditure of what you have and trying to budget within that term.
Any other comments or questions on the, on site meeting? Just one other piece of news, we did get a notification from the Department of Environmental Protection, who will be receiving the small county grant again, the same that was for the last year, seven thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars, so that'll be part of our budget makeup as we approach two thousand seven, two thousand twelve. I might answer any other questions that you may have for?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item two, discussion regarding paving of southwest Castleberry Trail, southwest Bentley Street, southwest Happy Street, and southwest George Street, Mr. Anderson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Martin, ask me to go ahead and get some prices up for him, and that's what we done. Y'all got enough happy here, that Happy Street, Bentley, and it's also include partridge out there of Brookwood, three hundred feet off, when the city land, we kept the city land side back to Bentley. And this include in Georgetown Avenue, it's a millin', a millin' in the road, millin' about there by the curbs. We got the mill that and everything, and, and we serviced it with a each and half of pavement. The millings, we've go back to, well, I'm gonna bring some trucks to get the millings, and then go back to our stockpile for the millings. And Georgia Street, the millings is coming out our apartment anyway, we gonna pay for the millings, and they asked me about go ahead and get the price, uh, pay for them. But if you look on the sheet, it got to sixty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, seventy-eight cents. But you subtract that seven, four hundred dollars from there, because they'll be coming out of my apartment. So that leaves sixty-one thousand, ninety-eight dollars, seventy-eight cents, so there at Georgetown, and, and also Georgia Avenue. And that's there in Georgetown, and then over, you know, Castleberry, that's the fish bar that we need to go look at. And that's, it's seven tenths of a mile, be twenty foot wide. And this will be including the millings, paving, them fixing it, and everything, it's a hundred and five thousand, twenty dollars, sixty-two cents. Now, that's just the estimate the cost of, for APEC to go in there and do this, and I like to say this, it ain't gonna get no cheating. I mean, they're right here in town, if you bid this job out, go outside and bid it, it's gonna be more. Mr. Martin, you have anything?
Yeah, on Castleberry, I read that the millin' is twenty thousand, six hundred fifty.
Uh, the millin's delivered, it, it, it twenty-six thousand dollars, yes, sir. That's our scattering, see, that's, that they gonna bring to us, and we'd be doing that too like we do at the opinion. They're bringing us the millin', we scattering, if they coming back in there, they're gonna remix it, wet it down, compact it, and pay it. It'll be the same subject like at the opinion.
I guess we gotta find out from attorney and find out what's gonna check, if he could be using fifth and six on the millin'. So I really can't make the decision until I guess to find out about that.
I think it's part of your construction, paving, I think.
Yeah, there's no question.
No question of that. But it's just, one question, if you just put millin' out without, you know, paving. But this is just a base, just like a law mark for, for paving, right? So just do the millin's and come back and pay it, pay it.
Yeah.
That's the same thing we talked about.
Okay, I'm about, I'm about Georgetown, that's strictly, that's strictly paving on that.
And that come out fifth and six, I mean, because that's all we have.
So, boy.
Well, in other words, if you go back to this Georgetown and Georgia Avenue, question Martin, we paying for the millings ourselves. We paid for it out of our apartment, so the millin' is not contested. So if you, if you go and pay Georgetown and Georgia Avenue, it, it's gonna run to some amount of sixty-one thousand dollars into that paving.
Mr. Sam, on the fifth and six, from my part, you gave us a sheet, I just wanna make sure, and that's how I'm gonna turn you out.
Now, that, that is prepared by Mr. Chair on your provision.
Huh?
Mr. Chair prepared that, that division cost.
What you saying that? Hundred and eight thousand, okay.
And, but, but Martin, if we, if that's something y'all need to do today, break with a look that up real quick, that's not a, that's not something that takes a tremendous amount of research.
Yeah. Could we, I'd like to have this.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I have need probably about ten, fifteen minutes, I can figure it out.
Yes, sir, yes, and I, I was, I said before, I go by the farm road, uh, yeah, I believe this a half a mile, a long, just guessing, so, so this, this would be cheaper on the farm road than what it would be with Castleberry. So I mean, I said it'd be somewhere around ninety, between ninety, ninety-five, I was an article, farm road to do everything, paving and millings.
That's for farm road?
That's for farm road. It just, just estimate the price without me going married, it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood there.
Okay, one thing, I guess, the only thing that's gonna be in question is Castleberry, on the rest of, uh, it ain't pushing most of them to come out fifth and six. I guess what I wanna do is I wanna make a motion to go ahead, you said around sixty-one thousand?
Georgetown.
Georgetown and, and, so that'll be my motion, that'll come out my fifth and six, which I got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so that'd be my motion.
You, it's Georgetown, that would be Ben, Ben Happy?
No.
Your motion?
Yeah, well, they happy, Bentley, uh, three hundred feet of Brookwood, across the three hundred feet of Brookwood.
That's the sixty-one thousand.
Uh, that's been sixty-one thousand, ninety-eight dollars, somewhere in the neighborhood.
Because the seven, the four hundred gonna come out?
Yeah.
Gonna come out here?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, it come out my apartment, I like to pass last time, that's the mission, we, we gonna get the millings.
So that'd be my motion, please.
The motion is to go ahead and with southwest Bentley Street, Happy Street, and George Street, those is two?
Brookwood.
Brookwood.
Well, that was including in this, I mean, he just didn't put it on his, that I called and asked him about it.
Okay, so southwest Bentley Street, Happy Street, George Street, and Brookwood.
Yes, ma'am, and I'd be from Bentley Street, I'd be from Jackson Street, start there at intersection of Jackson and Bentley, and going from Bentley down to Happy, then from Happy out to Gaines.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Vickers, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, five o. Are you gonna also come back with the information that he needs after the?
Yeah, about Castleberry.
About the Castleberry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the one that Commissioner?
Farm road.
And on the?
The farm road.
The farm road.
Okay.
Thing else, let's bring you kind of a little bit of update, if any, we should finish the millin' today, the base, and they'll be going in there working it, it might be paid then for four weeks. And fellowship, working on pay, wetting it down, they getting ready to get it paid.
Thank you, Red.
Thank you, Red, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
I looked at mine, all of it, it looked real good, did a good job on that.
Thanks again. Moving to finish business, discussion, we got a proposal from the Chamber of Commerce and Tours to utilize the old senior citizen building.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Last week, I submitted to Mr. Chair the proposal that the Chamber of Commerce is offering to the Florida County commissioners for the use of the senior citizen building. If there's any questions that y'all have, I'd be happy to answer them. Just one quick thing is that where we are right now, the cost of our utilities and rent is about nine hundred dollars a month. I believe the Chamber Board would be willing to pay at least that or less for the use of that building. However, there is some value in us, you know, managing the lease of the offices. I do have someone who's interested in leasing and using on a part-time basis the kitchen, and also someone who's interested in renting a small office there. If there's any questions.
A, a micro question is, is the chamber is a standalone organization. Can we lease that for a fee? Could, could we lease that to the Chamber before a designated fee?
Sure, sure, you could, you, no, you would get into, you need to look at the terms of the lease. If it's not going to be a long-term lease, if it's just going to be a month-to-month, or every several months, or whatever, you would be able to do that as the divorce is fit. Certainly, if you get into long-term leases, you get into issues like you need to bid it out, and that sort of thing, but just on, you know, leasing the property, I think you'd be okay. We need to, we, we, what, what kind of terms is the Chamber looking for? Are they looking for a long-term?
Long-term.
Um, as in, what do you mean by long-term?
Obvious to, whatever, whatever.
What's considered long-term? Do you?
Well, the, we'd have, we'd have to shell it out, I'm not sure, I'm talking ahead. Um, I went about a second, I get the other one, that's great. But the, the month-to-month, I don't think you'd have to leave, you'd have to do that, but other than that, if you're doing a significant commitment, you'd have, there might be some bidding requirements.
Because we would also oversee the, the offices that we don't use, we would attend to leases out from the county account for, for income to the county as well, so that, they would.
So, so it's not a sublease, it's your, your act, it's the agent of the county, the county's getting the rent?
Yes, yes, but we would, we would, we would occupy the building also. Yes, yes, but we would, we would, we would occupy the building also.
So you're saying the county gonna get the rent from the building?
From any offices that we run, that we ran out yesterday to offset the cost of, um, the maintenance and so forth, that's, is in the proposal.
How, how would that work with, you know, that's insurance bill?
Well, it'd probably fall upon our regular plan, we got financials. The only thing that I kinda see is the, the utilities and the.
That's the most.
And the, y'all.
And also the, um, bringing the building up to move-in condition, that building need a roof, doesn't it?
I, I, I would.
It needs some serious work on it. So the county will be responsible for bringing it up to code, they would have to pay for that?
Over a period of time, I was thinking, if you're only doing this to hold it at one time, he's only running the roof on it today.
Well, and, and if that's a concern, you probably have a building inspector to look at it, he can give an opinion on it.
And then the county pay for the power and the gas and the water? And pay those expenditures?
And what are those typically run?
The, the average when the senior citizens occupied the building was between five and six hundred a month for power and two hundred a month for water and gas.
Is, is the senior room gonna do anything?
Um, the ones that I spoke to, probably not. Um, they do give us a considerable, um, check each year, and then they do considerable amount of in-kind services for us. Um, but that's why I say what we're paying, what we're paying now for rent and utilities is about nine hundred dollars a month, which we could certainly, you know, give that to the county to offset the cost of utilities and so forth. Um, and, and, and the reason we propose it that way is because if you have someone come in and lease an office and they're utilizing electricity and you're receiving their rent for that, then of course, that would go to y'all to offset the cost of that rent. So.
So you would move out the building, the, the building that y'all occupying now, you're gonna move out of there altogether? And utilize this building?
Yes, ma'am. And just to clarify, on bringing the building into move-in condition, there's, it wasn't that we, you know, that the roof needs to be replaced or to do that right now. There's just the landscaping exterior, um, there's some painting that needs to be done, the carpets need to be cleaned, and of course, it needs to be vacated cause there's a tremendous amount of things in there that, um, have to be moved out. I did check after this last real hard rain that we had to see if there was any obvious root leaks or anything over there, and there didn't seem to be new, you know, water damage or anything like that. And I did ask Ms. Rosa if there was any, you know, cause if they hadn't already, if they hadn't vacated the building, they would still be, you know, if they hadn't gotten their grant and built their new building, they would still be in that building utilizing it on a daily basis, so. Um, she did not bring to, to mind anything that was, you know, urgent or pending. While there may be since the building's been sitting for almost a year, then there may be some issues that come up.
I, I guess my next question probably to the board, I don't, it gets up to us, you know, do we want to, 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 to work with the chamber on, on utilizing this building as a chambered office? If we do, I think maybe we need to put this back to probably the staff and attorney to, to come back with a firm proposal and, and, and a lease contract, something like that is where we do start, we'd sit here and hash back four things all day. Uh, go ahead and, and allow them to, uh, put, put us back with a lease group. If, if that's the consensus, and if we want to proceed or, or to go forward with, uh, allow the, the, the chamber to utilize the building.
And, and I think that's a good idea, cause I think that would leave work women in, I think at that time, things that we don't want in there, at that time, we can take them out, uh, three votes can take them out or whatever, that, that'd be the way to start, yeah.
I know we advertised, in fact, we're thinking about selling it, um, do we need to advertise for possibly leasing it?
Um, that's what they will have to look at. I know for, for long-term leases, you have to advertise, those are treated like sales. On leases like this that are, that are not month-to-month, but aren't, you know, they're not ninety-nine year leases either, I, I don't know the answer to that.
And I think Commissioner Ellis made a good point too, maybe we should advertise and see, you know, that would be the fair thing to do.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, there, there's no reason that, that you can't advertise, you don't want to, sir.
My recommendation motion would be to allow the attorney to, uh, and the staff to negotiate the lease group with the chamber.
How's that, my name?
We have a motion by, um, Commissioner Ellis, second by Commissioner Martin, any other discussion?
And your motion doesn't include putting this out for, for advertisement? No, if, if he sees fit, then we don't have to.
Now, would the amount be negotiated during that process too?
You, well, if, and, and let me make sure I understand what y'all wanna do, is that we're, we would sit down and try and, uh, work out a lease. Generally, with those lease agreements, I leave the amount blank, because that's not really a legal issue of the board. You know, they figure out the amount of money they wanna charge, and then it's just the terms of it, so that everybody's, uh, thought out those different terms, you know, as far as how we're gonna do it, because, you know, I, I was under the impression, I guess erroneously, that it was, it was a sublease arrangement, that we were leasing it to the, to the chamber, and then the chamber was gonna lease it to others, and the chamber would get that, that revenue.
And we could do that, I think that, that's a possibility as well.
Well, and, and the issue with that though is, if you do it that way, then the chamber's got the responsibility, if the tenants don't pay, then it's your cash flow that's messed up, not ours, and that's the, that, that, that's the issue there, as far as whether or not y'all want to assume that responsibility and, you know, and, and those types of things. So that, that, that's the kind of thing I would think we would be looking at with the lease to, to, to try to iron out those terms and get some proposed terms back. Am I understanding?
Yes, yeah.
Which I wanna do, but as far as the dollar amount, I generally leave those blanks, that's not a legal issue, and they, they know what they want.
And, and the reason, I'm, I'm saying, you know, uh, I, I'm not putting this out for, uh, to lease for the public, I think once you start doing that, you know, you're getting an enterprise. Or, or, you know, with, with the, with the chamber, we support the chamber, chamber is the, is the best bit for the county.
Aren't y'all, you just feel like a business incubator?
Right. It could be. Uh, like I said, if you have a woman that, you know, wants to use the kitchen to, to start a business.
Well, also could service to, uh, Commissioner Ellis, the community, you know, with innovative ideas that they might consider also for the county. And I do understand that we do support them, but, um, like, um, Commissioner Hammett said, to be fair about it, that would be the best way to do it. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, four one.
Four one, your vote?
Yeah.
Discussion regarding videotape of county commissioner meeting.
Chairman, uh, assigned to me, uh, the board had previously asked, um, that I meet with, uh, Mr. Overton about, uh, negotiating the terms of his service and see if that would be acceptable to the board, uh, for video and the meetings. We sat down, myself and Mr. Overton, uh, Mr. Cherry, and I thought I had a good, uh, discussion about it. Uh, what it finally came down to, I think, and Mr. Overton's here, he can create if he wanted, if he wants to. But I think he was willing to perform the service, uh, for fifty dollars a meeting, uh, do it, he would be available for all, uh, regular meetings, we can go ahead and schedule that. Uh, for most, uh, special meetings, um, those, of course, the special meetings can come up quickly, so you can't really guarantee you're gonna be available for all special meetings, that's understandable. Uh, and then would provide the, um, a, uh, DVD, uh, to the county to be held with clerks officers as a public record. Um, it, uh, the thought was, um, that it would not cover, any agreement with the county would not cover any kind of broadcast on the internet or anything like that, because as a public record, those, um, once the DVDs were in the possession of the county, they're public record, and anybody that wants to broadcast them can broadcast them, the board could broadcast them if you want to. So I think that was the, uh, the terms, I don't know if Mr. Overton wants to comment. Uh, and so it's back to the board, uh, as far as what y'all wanna do and, um, with this issue.
Quite a few cameras in here today. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to the board for discussion, um, a recommendation, to start with, Commissioner Hammett?
What, what are we discussing?
Uh, whether or not the video for the county commissioner meeting, item number two.
My feeling is if anybody wants videotape, let them come in and videotape. That's my personal thought. I should get Mr. Overton.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, uh, anyone who would like to, would be Channel Six or anyone else to come in here and get their video, or this public meeting. Uh, but I, 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 I don't think we should accept these as public record. Put us in a position to care for this and, and, and have to have it available to anyone that comes in. If anyone wants the copies of it, they can send them to, to be in newspapers and get copies, if, you know, if there's questions, don't give, they would know it, not us.
Commissioner.
I guess I feel probably basically the same way, and I know Mr. Green was in another meeting saying that he would offer the same thing for free, you know? So I guess if we open it up to either one of them, if they wanted to come in and do it, I guess they could do it. That's, that's, that's pretty much it.
Um, well, the discussion is that, um, Mr. John had been here, I think about two years, just videotaping, and Ms. Green brought it to our attention about the special meeting, and that's really how it resolved, about would she, you know, could he be compensated for that? So you have already prepared a contract for Mr.?
No, no, ma'am, uh, we had, we were instructed by the board, staff was meeting Mr. Overton and discuss the terms. Bring that back to this board, and y'all, if you want to enter to agree with them, we'll be having to prepare a contract.
Uh, at this time, I'm gonna open it to the public, if they, uh, see hands enough, the people that might wanna say something, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board. I'm here on behalf of Emerald Green. Uh, she had a business meeting in Deafson County, and then she was guest speaker at the Rotary Club, and asked me if I would be here. It was mentioned that someone had been coming for the last two years. This August, we would have been coming for the last forty-seven years. Uh, I'm highly opposed, as the Florida Press Association is highly opposed, to buying and selling news. Um, that goes against everything in our First Amendment sex. So we've offered the service, technology of this kind has just now come about in the last few years. And, uh, so we're here to offer you this service, uh, without charge to the county. And I'm opposed to, uh, anybody wanting to buy or sell news, because that leaves it wide open for tainted, uh, news or editorials or twisted or warped stories, and that word stories is in quotes, so, uh, we're here at your service. We get up here on behalf of Emerald, cause you want paper to be here. But we have twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five service. And, uh, what Jacob will be doing is live feed, uh, soon as, I think you said, one or two more cables come in. And we would like to offer this service to you and to the county as a whole, free, no charge to the taxpayer. Especially in these hard times, thank you.
Ms. Green.
Just like to clarify the access that an individual would have. Currently, I can sit at the computer, tune you in, and decide exactly what I think about what you said. So tell me, please, uh, if access by the individual is going to be the same, okay? And will there be opportunities for, uh, advertising? It's a very reasonable rate to advertise on Madison Voice, I'm interested in that. It'll still proceed without, uh, your, that information, but for a public service, the availability in my, um, messed up little office section, when I decide to look in and see exactly what went on, it's very valuable. So I have to be sure, this is part of the consideration, please.
Some of the things Tom McGreen said makes sense, let me go to the live feed, I've already tested the waters on that. People don't have time to watch this meeting live feed. I got eighteen viewers at best, and, I mean, I, I reach out to as many people as I do in a month and one day. So everybody knew I was doing it, but they have jobs, they don't have time for that, so we quit doing that. I think what it boils down to is reliability. Two and a, it's two and a half years I've been doing this. I've missed five meetings that I can tell, cause I have record of all the meetings, I have a copy of them all. I come to these meetings. You can rely on me, people rely on that video, they rely on the quality of that video, um, to be able to see the people's faces and what's going on. It, it's, it's a matter of credibility, I don't edit my videos, nothing happens, it's news the way it actually happened. You know, I, I personally, I know they did, but I didn't go around to each commissioner on the side and try to convince them of anything. I'm here, this is what I do, cause I'm standing by myself, I don't need to prove anything. Pass my six thousand we do a day, you know? That's it. Whatever he decides, fine, I'm still gonna do it.
Board.
I made a motion, we, we, we not contracted anyone to, uh, to video it, uh, all, all these, uh, whether it be a newspaper, uh, online or, or attorney, uh, they, they do their business with advertisements. That's their business. So y'all wanna get in for advertising, they just sort of news business. They're welcome to, for, for, for this, but we would not contract anyone to, to, to video our meetings.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ellis, do I have a second?
Second.
That's second by Commissioner Hammett, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. Number three, discussion regarding dedication of picnic area loan trails in honor of Deputy Marcus Jones. In your package, you have a picture of the site. One is in Hanson, and the other one is in Pineapple. These are, Commissioner Martin, you wanna go there?
Yes, uh, uh, me and Mr. Allen Cherry and Ms. Vickers went out last week and took pictures of these two sites. I know when, when it was brought up, the trail was basically already named, and then we said, maybe we could look at, uh, some of these break sites, and then we could name one of them after, since the trail's already named, so. Went out and took pictures of two that we thought that would be, uh, two good ones, and, so these is the two, uh.
Are there any plans to build anymore of these closer to town? No strategy.
Not that I'm aware of, for this time.
Now, what would happen, would this would be the location, that they would do the dedication for that park area that they had there? That, that would have something like a plaque or something.
Yeah, just a little plaque, some people, they're members of Marcus Jones.
So we could choose from the Hanson or the Pineapple site?
After I don't make a motion, I'll choose the Pineapple site.
Commissioner Vickers had made a motion to approve the Pineapple site, do I have a second?
I said.
Commissioner Martin, second, have any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by aye. All opposed, same sign, bye though, we're gonna take a five-minute break. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Very good girl.
It's me, yes, hey, it's, she's doing good. It's been a long time.
You got a helper today?
Yeah.
Well, it's your helper, you're trained, you're, keep training you.
She's keeping me awake.